Cable Access Television. In the chat, we'll be posting a link to the Airtable. Airtable comments and questions are part of the public record. You can enter. If we are able to, we will try and address questions and comments live during the meeting. We aren't always able to do that, especially this evening, when I know that there could be a lot of questions regarding the spring full return. If we are not able to get to your question, or if it's a highly specific question, we absolutely recommend that you direct those questions towards building leadership. They are your best resource for getting a quick response if you have a question regarding the spring return. So please feel free to put your questions in. Often, we'll try and address the most frequently asked questions, but depending on the number that are there, just warning people in advance. We can't guarantee to get to all of them this evening. With that said, I'll turn the floor over to Bill.
Thank you, Gloria. We are all eagerly awaiting next Monday when we welcome back our elementary students. I want to say that tomorrow I'll be sending out some information on sort of operational and logistics issues. We had a meeting with the leadership team last week, and we talked about what logistical issues should come out from my office and what should come out from the schools. And so that document is just about ready. It will go out in the morning and provide some information to to parents, whether it's transportation, lockers and cubbies, lunchtime, classroom setup, et cetera. We've had a variety of topics that we've addressed, some of which, as I said, I've addressed, some of which the principals have preferred to address from their particular site. So we're looking forward, we're anxious, we are ready. Top of the bus company today, they are, you know, they're prepared in terms of the routes. So we're just, we're excited. It's like the first day of school in the, in late summer for us. I had a wonderful time this morning reading to Mr. Flick's class at the day school. I was able to read the book Down to the Sea with Mr. McGee. And if you have young children, I would highly recommend you get that book and you read it to them. It is a very, very enjoyable book to read. I had a great conversation with his fourth grade class, and I told him I wanted to come back before the end of the school year certainly and do it again. We had a good meeting, I thought, with the Joint FinCom Select Board. Last Thursday night, we have another one coming up on April 8th. We do have a few lingering questions and additional questions that have come in that we will be answering and sending that out to all of you much in advance of April 8th. I want to remind the public also that I will be conducting the second part of my School Finance 101 discussion next Monday night, April 5th at 7:00 PM. This time, it's going to focus on the expense side of the ledger. The first, first part was focusing on the revenue and the sources of revenue that fund our budget and some of the complexities associated with that. We're going to try and be as thorough as possible and explain to people what services are provided, where to look in the budget for for particular services. We've got a couple of graphic organizers in terms of for typical elementary school, middle school, high school. What are the, what does the classroom and the support services look like for students? Just to provide people with a little extra, extra information to help them understand what we do, when we do it, and how we do it. I'm going to ask parents and our students to be very diligent in the next week about wearing masks and distancing. As you know, the incidents of COVID cases across the area are beginning to increase somewhat, although the transmission rate in the school system is still negligible, but we want to keep it that way. But it's extraordinarily important that everyone remains distanced, distanced, and appropriately masked when in close proximity or in groups. That's the only way. That's the only way that we're going to be able to beat this virus. In addition to, you know, adults and certainly hopefully down the road, younger children being able to be vaccinated. So please, please be observant because we want to minimize the possibility of the virus entering into our school system. Okay, you've seen what's happened in Kingsborough. They had an elementary school that closed, but you can do your part. You and your children can do your part to greatly reduce the possibility of the virus spreading. And so that's what I'm asking you to do. Okay? The commissioner has come out with guidance on playgrounds and graduation. We'll be sharing that with you and with the parents also. Playground, we are intending to disinfect each morning, particularly the high-touch surfaces, the rails. The DESE has indicated do not, do not try to treat the wood surfaces, but the high-touch areas. We're going to do it every morning because we want to make sure that we get the playgrounds before they have been used and after perhaps some, some of the community residents have used them in the afternoon hours or evening hours. Okay, so we're going to be careful and methodical about that. And see, I believe that is it right now. I want to wish everyone, once again, who celebrates Passover, a happy Passover, and those who celebrate Easter upcoming are happy Easter. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Bill, and thank you for those cautions about continuing to be cautious. I think those cautions would, of course, extend to celebrating the holidays and the upcoming April break. So anyone who may be traveling, please use caution. Please follow all travel advisories in another state you might be visiting or upon your return to Massachusetts. And I think it would be really helpful if that could also be reiterated to families as part of the email updates. I think that that'd be helpful.
That's part of the message coming out tomorrow morning, including the link. We have the latest travel advisory on our dashboard, and so that link is going to be in the communication tomorrow morning.
Fantastic. You're one step ahead of me. With that, Assistant Superintendent update.
Well, thank you. We are in the beginning stages of building a summer school program for elementary students to help bridge the bit of a gap that has occurred for some students. And it will provide them extra support and reinforcement in content areas to help them get or be more successful in the fall when they return to school at their next grade level. So we're going to use benchmark data to determine what the CADA scores are, and it will definitely be data-driven. And we're looking at holding this particular program remotely because we have had such success at our elementary levels offering our math intervention and reading intervention during the students' async weeks. And these small group sessions, we feel 30 minutes at a time for three days per week. For about, we're looking at five weeks would be a great opportunity for students to not have to carve out full days or even half days of their summer to go off to school, but to log on and get very direct sessions with a small group. There might be anywhere from two to five students in each group, again, with a targeted content area. So we're in the very early stages, and when we finalize those plans, we'll certainly bring them before all of you so that we can share what our next steps are. But that's something that we're excited to be able to offer this year over the summer. And then I just wanted to provide a brief update regarding vaccinations. Jeff Stevens has worked with his regional collaborative to hold clinics for educators back in, I think, two weeks, March 20th and then March 27th, so two Saturdays that were specific for educators. So he had done a great job communicating with our staff and sharing the links. And it was a great opportunity for our staff to have kind of a direct connection to vaccination sites. And then we also, as we had mentioned before, and I know Bill had really wanted to express the gratitude that we all share for the parents who have been stepping in to call us and ask, you know, if they have, if they're online and see any open vaccination appointments to call us to say, you know, who still needs it. So what we did was we sent out a form to all staff, and of course, the form was optional. And we said, if you're struggling to get an appointment, then fill out this form, and then we'll have one spreadsheet. So as Jeff Stevens in the Health Department or these parents or other staff members who come across these appointments, they call us, we would be able to have some information for them as to who is looking for appointments. And fortunately, we only have 23 people in the whole district who are on that spreadsheet. So that speaks volumes to how accessible, really, the vaccinations for educators have become. And then also Christine Jussam, who's the president of the WEA, had put out a survey to just elementary staff in anticipation of the April 5th reopening. And we know, and it's very clear, that vaccinations are not a prerequisite for a safe reopening with the mitigation measures that we have in place. But we also know that there were staff who were concerned and worried about reopening prior to having vaccines available. So then the information that she gathered, Christine gathered, was there were 200 elementary respondents. So we were thrilled with that number. And 41%, 41% of those individuals will be fully vaccinated before April 5th. But 94% have been able to schedule their vaccination. So while by the 5th, they may not have gone through the full process of, in some cases, the two shots and then the buffer period after the fact, 94% of them said that they had appointments ready to go. So again, we're very pleased with seeing these numbers and moving ahead. So that's the update I have for tonight, and then the rest will be in the next part of the agenda.
Great. Thank you very much. That's excellent news. For school committee updates, the, the one thing I wanted to mention is we were able to join the NEASK review process last Monday. At Westford Academy, we had a really good discussion with the visiting NEASK team. And I saw some initial feedback from that today that Principal Antonelli had forwarded. That was excellent feedback from the team. So kudos to Principal Antonelli and the entire team at Westford Academy. It sounds like that process went very well with the NEASK visit. And
Do you want to tell folks at home what NEASK is for those who might not know?
Oh, see, now, Chris.
You don't have to do the acronym. Just say what they
You're going to call me out if I don't know the acronym.
It's the New England Association of Schools and Colleges.
Thanks for the phone a friend, Bill. The NEASK process happens once every 10 years, and it is a group that comes in and evaluates Western Academy, our curriculum, the school, and, and makes not only an accreditation decision, but also has kind of a collaborative review process where they talk about things that, that Western Academy or the other schools that they review, obviously, you know, might want to work on to, you know, continue their process of, you know, continued improvement of their schools as part, that are part of the NEASK group. So it's, it's an interesting process. They certainly met with a number of groups at Western Academy, and we, and we, as the school committee, were glad to be able to meet with the NEASK team and talk to them. So thanks for the call out there, Chris. Any other school committee updates? Chris?
A smallish one. Just that the Policy Subcommittee met, we basically took hiatus during the search process, and we met today. So, you know, nothing really to bring back to the committee at this point, but we were we were fortunate enough to be joined by some WA students, some amazing students who are petitioning us on a number of areas that I think we'll be looking at, you know, some things that meshed well with conversations we'd had. So anybody who's curious about Policy Subcommittee, our agendas get posted on that town website, and feel free to join us. I'm sure we'll have more to report later.
Valerie?
I just wanted to add that, like Bill, I also read to a class today, and I was just about as nervous as Candidates Night last year, but managed to, managed to pull it off. And we read a book called, it was a fifth grade class at day school, and we read a book called If I Built the School. It goes through all these kind of fun imaginative changes to the school. But what was killing me was that they were asking, how much will that cost? How much will that cost? So I was like, oh, we might have some future school committee members here.
I'm glad the day school is being fiscally responsible. Thank you, day school. Any, any other updates? Okay, student representatives, any updates, Brian or Hannah?
Well, we just had our meeting, like Professor Sanders said, with the Joint School Committee, Student Council. And this week is Teacher Appreciation Week, so Student Council and the students have been putting together some stuff to celebrate our teachers. And other than that, I think everyone is looking forward to April break and getting back in person. And that's all I have.
Anything additional, Brian?
Not much in additional for this week, no.
All right, all right, great. Thank you both. Next up, we're going to be discussing the spring full return reentry plan.
Well, Carrie, I don't know if you want to start it off, or you want me to start it off?
I'm happy to start with the data, and then we can provide some operational updates. So is it all right if I just share my screen? I've got a couple of slides for you. Okay, so we have some slides regarding the data from the survey that recently went out to families. Perhaps one of the last surveys of the year, so we can celebrate that. And this was asking families what their plans were for the full return. They had the option, if they're currently in hybrid, to stay within person, but of course, shift away from the hybrid because we're no longer doing that as of April 5th at the elementary and the 26th at secondary, and shift to the full return, or they can shift to RLA and be fully remote. On the flip side, for current RLA students, they were able to select either sticking with RLA through the end of this school year, or they may want to return to go back to the in-person in April. So this is the information that we needed in order to begin class replacements and reconfiguring schedules. So it was one of those tricky things where families were wondering, you know, will my child be impacted by a classroom teacher change? And our answer was, we're not sure until you tell us if you're coming back or not. So you can imagine the frustration there. But the families, certainly, we appreciate, all year, we've appreciated their flexibility and their cooperation. And sure enough, we do have ultimately what ended up being 100% participation by the end. So we know where everybody is going in April. So thank you to everybody who participated. So the slides are broken down. This is kindergarten through second grade, and there's just two slides per grade span. The first slide shows the answers to the survey regarding the hybrid students on the left and the current RLA students demonstrated by the pie chart on the right. And you can see here, the choice was, in blue, for the current hybrid students, are you going to return to five days a week? Or the red indicates the answer of no, I'm going to switch my child to Remote Learning Academy. And in grades K to 2, we only had three students who will be switching out of the in-person model of learning to the RLA. Meanwhile, if you look on the right-hand side, these are our current RLA students. And we have just under half of them, which are 122 K to 2 students, who will be shifting out of their current RLA model and heading back to the classroom full-time on April 5th. So this is actually, it comes as quite a surprise to us. We thought there would be more of a wash or closer to a wash for the number of students switching from either side. And you will see in this presentation that there's an overwhelming amount of people from RLA who do, who are choosing to switch back to in-person, but much less so, vice versa. And with that type of shifting, amongst other things, we had to, as we had forewarned, we had to make some shifts in class placements and rebalance classes all over again. So you can see at the bottom there, we have 172 students in K to 2 who were placed with a different classroom teacher. Because we had anticipated more of kind of an equal switch between hybrid and RLA and vice versa, we did not anticipate this many students having to change their classroom teachers. But what we did do is prepare for any one student or all students. So we are creating a transition process for those students to meet their new teachers, for some of the RLA students to enter into the buildings if they're switching from out of school to in-school. So the principals are being really deliberate and careful to make sure that all students, although it might be a little bit anxiety-provoking in advance, thinking of switching classroom teacher in April, we are fully prepared to welcome these students and to make them feel like they've been part of the class the entire year. Then we also wanted to get a feel for transportation because we know that with any sort of switch like this, it will impact busing. So this was for each grade span, we had asked whether the children, this was, this actually only went to the families who selected in-person learning. So the RLA students aren't accounted for here. They never even saw this question if they selected RLA in April. But we are focusing most heavily on this yellow section because the yellow section indicates new bus ridership. So my child hasn't taken the bus this year, but I plan on getting a bus pass. And Jen Piper has been monitoring these numbers very closely and working with Dee and with Bill to prepare for this transportation change. Then moving on to grades three to five, you can see a similar type of trend in that on the left-hand side of our current hybrid students, seven of them will be shifting to RLA. Whereas out of our current RLA population, we have 161 students who will be shifting from RLA back to in-person learning. And with that fairly significant switch, we have 145, you can see on the bottom, students who are placed with different classroom teachers. And everything I had mentioned about our preparation for assisting and supporting smooth transitions also, you know, applies to grades three through five as well. In terms of transportation, the colors are, are not consistent from one transportation slide to the next. So you'll just have to bear with me. On this transportation pie graph, we're looking at the red. And the red indicates that there will be about 158 new riders beyond the amount of bus passes we already have up to this point. So those families are encouraged to get a bus pass as soon as possible, and that can be done by contacting the business office or going right on our website. Moving on to middle schools, again, you can see that there's only a sliver of our current hybrid students who are shifting to RLA. And meanwhile, of our middle school students who are currently in RLA, there are 158 students who will be shifting out of the remote and participating in the full return. At the bottom here, because the way that the teams are structured, I have zero students replaced with different classroom teachers, and that has since shifted. There's a small handful of students who will be placed with different classroom teachers. And that's, I believe, only at one school in one grade level and a very small number of students. However, they are all on their same team. So the impact here in terms of changes is much less so than at the elementary level, which we knew. We do have some RLA sections that will be live streaming, depending on the grade level, and that just had to do with the numbers. If there was not enough RLA students to warrant an entire math class, for example, and there's only a small handful, then we are setting up technology so that that group can livestream in and participate that way. Middle school transportation, we've got, in the red, we've got 161 new riders that we expect, starting on April 26th. And again, Jen Piper is preparing for this, but does emphasize the importance, particularly at the middle school and high schools, of getting in and getting that bus pass as quickly as possible because the number of new bus passes that we've received certainly don't yet reflect the number of changes as indicated by this survey. So we just want to make sure parents can purchase or get the bus pass as quickly as possible so that we have the concrete numbers moving forward. And then lastly, at Westford Academy, again, we've got a small number of our current hybrid students, 15, who are shifting to RLA. And then for our RLA students, we have 101 of them who will be coming back to the in-person. And because we were set up so that the students are live streaming at the academy, it was much less of an issue for students to be switching, and therefore, students' schedules did not change, and teachers did not have to change. And then lastly, for WA transportation, we're looking at this number in red, and there's 95 students who have indicated that they will be taking the bus, but have not previously this year been part of the bus system. So we've gathered this information. Principals have acted very quickly. I believe that any impacted student has already been communicated with, and transition plans are underway. So I commend the principals and the leadership team, assistant principals, for getting on top of that so quickly so that they can be very thoughtful in their planning because April 5th is coming very quickly at the elementary level. And I know April 26th will be right behind it. So at this point, I'll stop sharing, and then I'll turn it over to Bill for some of the highlights for the operational pieces of the full return.
Well, I had a conversation with the bus company again today and with Jen Piper, our transportation manager. Most routes will remain the same, although there may be some alterations. Those will be posted on the, on the website this week. Just to remind parents, the bus pass for the remainder of the year is $150 with a $400 family cap. The bus seats will be numbered. There will be a number above each seat on the bus wall, above the window. What we're going to do, and this will be in the communication that I send out tomorrow, the bus driver in the morning will load the students from back to front to minimize passing on the bus. And the child will remain in that particular seat, that seat number for the remainder of the year, both every morning pickup and the take-home in the afternoon. That way, we will be able to engage in a a more accurate contact tracing process, if that is necessary. If they're shifting around constantly from one day to the next, from morning to afternoon, that could mean an entire bus quarantine, quite honestly, I'm talking with our school nurses. So then seats will be numbered. The child will get on the bus in the morning, sit in that particular seat, note the number. We'll have the school bus driver make sure the children all note what seat number they're in, and they will return to that seat in the afternoon for dismissal, and also thereafter, every day, morning and afternoon. I will tell you, our furnishings for the K to 2 level arrived today. The desks are being set up. They, the desks are being set up and the chairs have arrived. Um, as you know, we, we have moved away from some of the trapezoidal tables and round tables and kidney shaped tables at that particular level to to student desks, appropriately sized student desks, pretty much facing in the same direction. If a trapezoidal table, uh, needs to be used, students will sit at the diagonal ends, which are more than three feet apart. And we have had, uh, I had our maintenance staff make 150 Plexiglas shields that will be placed in the middle of the, um, trapezoidal table to separate, provide greater separation and safety with the students, keeping in mind that they will, they will in fact be masked. Uh, issues like lockers and cubbies will be at the school's discretion. Um, you know, we've had many discussions over the last few months and some of the principals would prefer to make some of these site-based decisions instead of a one size fits all across, across the district. Um, uh, the nurses are ready. Uh, they know that there may be some, you know, elevated level of contact tracing. But, um, you know, we want to make sure, that's why I mentioned in the update, we want to make sure that people remember when you're outside of the school environment, that's the greatest area of concern. Not in the school because the school has been, uh, the school's being disinfected every night. We've, we've placed that in the information. They've been routinely cleaned. The bathrooms are being routinely cleaned, uh, several times throughout the day. Uh, so that lots of operational issues where we're still not going to have the before school program for the remainder of the school year because we really, uh, we, given the fact that we are still in the pandemic, we don't want to have surfaces touched by a lot of students without adequate time to disinfect them be between the time that the early morning arrival starts and the actual school day begins. And so we will not have that program for the remainder of this, uh, of this school year. We're going to also, uh, continue with our policy of no visitors or volunteers in the buildings. Uh, because we want to minimize the amount of people coming in from the outside. So there are, are lots and lots of issues that, that we have addressed and are addressing either through my office or through the principals and the individual schools. As I said, those will all come out tomorrow, including the link to the travel advisory as we referred to previously, which, which has changed somewhat. Uh, as of about, um, a little less than a week ago in the governor's office. Um, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you, you might have in particular terms or any suggestions for information that you think I should include in the document that's going out tomorrow. Owen?
Um, is there any like success criteria or I guess the opposite of success criteria that we'll be watching to look for um, any concerns or an uptick or? Sorry, I'm not spitting it out right, but I think you, you're nodding. So I think you know what I meant.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll watch for the, uh, any clusters that develop, which is some more than several students in a, in a classroom. Um, could be a number of students in a, in a school that would create an environment that we might think is necessary to close the school down for, for a week or so. We're hoping that, that's not the case. And there's where once again, the habits outside of the school environment are so important to allowing us to maintain a safe learning environment in the school system. The staff, uh, Carrie will tell you also has been very pleased with all the health and safety measures that we've taken. I think we've taken as much, if not more, as any other school system. They're very pleased and, um, all sorts of items available. There was a, there was a question, uh, about the fact that someone heard that there were no shields available for teachers um, at the lower grade levels or working with children of special needs. And that's not the case. We've had, we've had face shields, um, for, since the beginning of, of the school year. But we're looking at any clusters of Valerie, um, that are repetitive in nature or growing and proliferating. And that's, that's a warning sign to us that we need to take some action.
Just to follow up, because I didn't admittedly read every page of the, the guidance that came out, but is there, is that mentioned at all? Like from the state level, is there anything that would, that gives that power back to the district to be able to say we're going to slow down or anything?
Well, we could, we, we have the authority to, to close a school. Uh, what we'd probably do if we saw an incidence increasing, we'd probably have the rapid test unit from the state come out. Okay. And assess the situation and, um, see what the scope of the issue is. We're hoping that's, that's not the case, uh, because of the measures we've, uh, we've taken. And the parents, I have to say, the parents have been absolutely terrific this year in not sending their children to school with any types of symptoms. And I'm going to ask again, while we're on a public meeting, that if your child, it displays any symptoms, that are consistent, COVID, whether it's chills, cough, fever, um, feeling very sluggish, uh, please don't send them to school. Okay. And notify the school and, and the school nurse.
Chris? Uh, first, just thanks to the, to you and the team and the, the school leadership for putting this together so well and so quickly. I have, I think, less of a question, more of an explanation of, of my thought process on something, just in case anyone out there had a similar reaction. I will be honest, when I saw the numbers of students who would need to switch classrooms, it struck me as large, right? I think in my head, I'm like, it's going to be a handful. But then I thought about the math and I thought, well, for K to two, that's three grades times three schools is nine, you know, nine grades essentially. And if you have on average, say five classrooms, you know, per grade, per school, that's, you know, on average, like 45 classrooms. And so I thought, well, if you have 150, 45, you know, really you're talking like three students per class, you know, three to four on average. And I guess that's the handful of students that in my head were going to be impacted that way. So, um, just in case anyone else sort of had to go through that too, to, to make that number seem a little bit more bite-sized. But that said, for those students, that's a big deal. It's a big transition. So I guess I'd ask, what are we hearing from the families, um, who have been contacted? I, I think you said families have been contacted who will be switching. What are we hearing? Um, how are those concerns coming across and being, uh, addressed?
I actually, to be honest, have not heard anything. I think that those conversations are happening with the building principal. I know that there have been some, um, proactive phone calls to families of students who the principals anticipated would have a much more difficult time making any sort of, um, switch and kind of overhauling their schedule. So the, the principals have been handling this, but, um, and while those are difficult conversations to have, and the principals did have kind of that feeling of preferring to not have to make those phone calls or, or send those notifications. I, I do believe that, you know, parents have cooperated beautifully and students have just been incredible throughout this entire year, amazing. Um, and Bill, I'm not sure if you heard any, have heard any concerns or complaints.
I have not. And I was going to say the same thing. They, uh, in my opinion, they've gone mostly to the individual schools with the principals or assistant principals.
Thanks.
Um, I guess, I guess I had somewhat of a follow-up on what Chris was talking about. When, when these shifts had to happen, um, was there, was there an attempt made to kind of keep cohorts together as much as possible? I know when we were originally discussing this, you know, the scenario of the teacher who might have a hybrid and a RLA pod, that there was going to be an attempt made to kind of move an entire pod together. So kids might be having a teacher change, but they might also be moving with some of their same peers. Um, given the numbers and the way they dominoed out, was, was that possible? Um, are, are kids kind of moving in little groups?
Principals certainly took into consideration, um, just like we do every year when we're creating class lists moving forward to try to make sure that students have peers that they know. What didn't happen that we thought we would have kind of a little more control over is that flip-flop scenario that you're referring to. And the reason is because that was based on the number of RLA pods that we had. And many of those have now disappeared. And we have a, um, I think we've only got two mixed pods throughout the elementary schools. And we started with like 18 or something along those lines. So we do have full remote teachers certainly still, but the numbers were so uneven, you know, moving over to the full return that it wasn't just full cohort pods uh, as much as we would have liked, but certainly the principals kept students together to the best of their ability.
Um, there was also one question that came in on the air table, um, which has been amazingly quiet tonight, I'm sure because the presentation was so comprehensive. So thank you for that. Um, the, the hybrid model allowed for some accommodations in the case of quarantine shifting to remote in with, within the same classroom or teacher. So what accommodations might be available for, um, the full return in case, um, a student or group of students or a teacher have to quarantine?
So depending on the level, so at the high school level, it's basically a non-issue because students could be home quarantining, participating by live stream into their classes. At the other levels, uh, the, the default mode would be some asynchronous work assigned so that they, um, the students can continue to participate, but would do so asynchronously. And then of course, teachers would be available to answer emails or any sort of communication like that, but that, that's kind of our um, default mode. And then if there's ever a case where an entire class had to be quarantined, certainly that whole class would just continue to learn together remotely. Um, and then we would also, if there was an individual student whose class wasn't quarantining, we would look at, are there other classes at that grade level that are quarantining? And see how we can be most efficient. But again, the default will be the asynchronous work. And the students would then, um, not be marked as a formal absence. It would be coded differently.
Um, other questions from the committee? Alicia?
Um, I know we talked, uh, I know the COVID committee talked about supplies and how we have plenty of supplies, but I wonder if, um, thinking about increasing the number of people in the building at the same time and the, um, increase in cleaning and kids and masks and things like that. Is there any concern about whether or not we'll need to do another order of supplies? Or do we think that what we have right now should be sufficient to get us through the, to mid-June?
I, um, had Paul Fox check on that about 10 days ago. Paul, you know, as you know, being the facilities director, uh, we're in very good shape for the remainder of the, uh, of the school year. Um, we should have, it should have absolutely no, no problem.
Thanks.
Yeah. I, I will say also that since the, a number of students have not been back in the buildings for a considerable amount of time, you know, we will resume fire drills, uh, within the next couple of weeks to make sure the children are familiar with evacuation routes from the buildings to maximize their safety. I've checked in with Chief Targ, uh, uh, this, this morning, as a fa- as, as a matter of fact, to talk about the fact that, that we will be conducting them, there will be distancing, we will talk to the children, uh, at such time when we're ready for the fire drills to begin, which I think will be in about 10 days from now.
Um, other questions? I don't see anybody waving at me. And, um, oh, there is one more in the air table. Um, please clarify under what circumstances summer school will be required at the elementary level? And when will parents be notified as parents are already arranging for summer childcare?
I'm really happy that question came up because I think I wasn't clear enough. There is, there is no requirement for summer school. So I apologize. This is just an opportunity for a certain number of students who meet a certain criteria to be offered some added tutoring in math and in literacy. We're looking at, um, mid-May to reach out to families who students qualify and who are welcome to participate, but absolutely positively, this does not impact students' ability to move forward to the next grade level. It is not required at all, but we're looking at a mid to late May, um, list of students so that we can reach out to those parents and then see if they're interested or not, and either is fine.
Um, Chris?
Apologies if we touched on this earlier and I missed it, but did you want to spend a little time talking about what lunch might look like?
Yes, um, there, there may very well be more lunch periods than there have been in the past. That's, um, sort of up to the individual principal. Uh, there is no standard number per school, you know, depends on the numbers of grades and, and, and the number of classes in those each respective grades, but the lunch, once again, will be a bagged lunch. And, um, the children will not be waiting in line. Okay. Cause we don't want, uh, want them bunching together at all. Uh, we are looking at spaces, the principals are setting up spaces both in the school and outside the school. Some of the schools are leasing, uh, large commercial tents. Um, there will be some chairs available outside, but we're not going to put tables outside because that involves simply too many tables with children being s- distanced six feet apart with no masks. It's, it's very impractical, uh, to have a number of the number of tables that would be sufficient. So there'll be chairs available for the, the students to sit under the, under the tents and in climate weather or out in the backyards of the schools, um, monitored by the principals, uh, principal aides. And so uh, we anticipate it'll be a smooth process. And, um, you know, the principals have thought it through very carefully. Um, and I'm very pleased with what they've come up with.
Um, Avery?
Hi, um, a follow-up question to that on the tents. You said some schools, are schools, um, buying or renting those on their own? Or are we providing tents to the schools that request them? I guess, why aren't we just setting up tents in every school to make that an option at all levels?
Um, I'll be talking with the principals this week about, I think most of them are having tents. Uh, some of them though are, are stringing together some smaller tents, uh, which is, you know, could be concerning in a, in a high wind. We wouldn't take the kids out in a high wind, but keep in mind that the, uh, the state and federal monies for COVID relief will pay for those and the principals understand that. So those are not coming out of their budget. So there really, um, is no disincentive for a principal to, um, you know, not have a tent.
Well, I think I had sent you an email. I was concerned as to why PTOs were raising funds to purchase or rent tents.
Yeah, they shouldn't be because that's a very COVID-eligible expense.
Okay.
Um, any additional questions? Um, nobody's waving at me and I'm not seeing anything in the air table. So, um, I will just, uh, reiterate a thank you, um, to the administration, um, to, um, all the building leadership, the teachers, the families, the kids. I mean, this is just a huge undertaking and is, is going to require a lot of moving parts and a lot of cooperation and absolutely just a huge thank you to everyone. Um, I, I think it's, it's going to be so exciting for, for kids and, um, and teachers and staff. Um, when, you know, buildings are, are more full and more active. And I think it's also going to pay huge dividends in the fall, um, because having this time in the buildings now, I think is going to mean a lot for a fall return. And having that just feel more comfortable and normal for everyone. And, and also just a, I think it's, it's also bears sending a message to those who are still on RLA that, you know, we fully understand and support those families who have made the decision that they feel like they needed to either shift to or continue with RLA. Um, they're absolutely just as much an important part of our school system. And, um, if, if any of those families need support during this process, um, they should also be reaching out to their teachers or, or building leadership, um, because. because their needs are just as important as the needs of the students who are coming back into the building. And with that, I guess we can move on to budget. Thank you very much, everyone.
Well, I just want to convey again that we got, I think, a very successful meeting with the finance committee and the select board. You have approved a budget appropriation from the town. Hopefully, with the second session coming on April 8th with the FinCom and Select Board, hopefully, they will endorse our budget also. We have met, the important thing is we have met the town manager's appropriation increase for this year, which was originally 1.4% with the $137,580 of Student Opportunity Act money, which is considered Chapter 70, but needs to be appropriated to the school system because we applied for that money to the DESE. That brings us up to a 1.62% increase, which is one of the lowest we've had in many, many years. But we've been able to leverage our resources, plan very carefully. And that's the one thing that we need to do going into the future is recognize what monies we have, what revenues we have available to us, and leverage our position from one year to the next. You know, one of the things that came up this morning, just as an aside, when I was reading to Mr. Flick's classroom, he and I talked for about 30 seconds after I finished. And, you know, as you're dying, wish me well, but he said, you know, one of the important things, and I think I've said this to you before, he said, one of the most important things that we have benefited from in the past is stability. And so it's that understanding of the resources we have and the use of them at various points in time, lesser or greater magnitudes, that provides that stability of programming and services to students from one year to the next. So we do have a couple of questions from the FinCom. We are putting together the five-year history revolving account activity, like Christina Green has requested, and we'll get that out sometime this week. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have about the budget, but we're pretty much home right now.
Great, thank you for continuing to address those questions from FinCom. Are there any other lingering questions from the committee at this stage? No one's waving a hand, so we will look forward to the next installment of School Finance 101 next Monday night. And then our next hearing, budget hearing with Select Board and FinCom on April 8th. And I'll double-check. There was one question in the air table. If we have to reconsider bus transportation, would we still work directly with D? I'm not sure that I fully understand the question. I don't know if this is for next year or for future years, but my understanding is, you know, next year, of course, we would still be working with D at that point. We will have the opportunity to rebid the contract. D, of course, would be welcome to bid, as well as anyone else, any other companies within the state. But whether that might be three-tier or four-tier and how that contract will be bid is a decision that will have to be made next year. If I didn't quite get that question right, or if there's some other detail that we're missing, please feel free to elaborate in the air table or send an email.
If they don't do that tonight, Gloria, if they want to send me a direct email, I'll be glad to respond to that question.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Next order of business is we have some contract extension approvals. Did you want to speak to that, Bill, or do you want?
Well, I'm glad to say that we had a very, very good collaborative session and sessions with the WEA, who represents, is the umbrella group that represents a number of different units. And pleased to be able to say that, consistent with what the town has granted for cost of living adjustments, we renegotiated one-year agreements at the present time with units A, B, C, and G. That is the teachers, the coordinators, and some of the student support leaders who will remain at the upper grade levels. Group C is the nurses and G is the math and reading interventions. And they have all agreed to a 2% cost of living adjustment with no other terms and conditions of the contract changed for next year. So we thank them for their cooperation. It was a very, a negotiations that was very much in good spirit with consideration of the town's fiscal condition. And glad that that's behind us now. We only have a few more to go of a lesser magnitude, but that is where we are. And once again, that COLA was consistent with what the town has granted as a COLA also.
Thank you, Bill. Yeah, I think the other comment I would add, just for the public's information, is that 2% COLA does allow us to keep pace with our benchmark communities. It, I feel that it honors the commitment that this committee and the town has made to equitable teacher pay going forward. It also, you know, really acknowledges what a difficult year our staff has had. So we absolutely wanted to do everything that we could for our staff within the fiscal limitations that we were operating under. And thank you again to, you know, Bill and the central office staff who worked so hard on the budget to make it possible that this 2% offer was possible within difficult budgetary constraints. It is a one-year contract, you know, extension, which I think does recognize some of the fiscal uncertainty that we have going forward. So this does provide everyone some reassurance and stability for coming back in the fall, but also will put us in the position of next year of doing, kind of starting from scratch and doing a, what will hopefully be a multi-year contract renewal during the year next year. But we will be set for all of next year, and that certainly provides us some stability and provides some stability for the staff as well. So any questions from the committee on approval of these one-year contract extensions for units A, B, C, and G? Just taking a peek at the air table and without waving, I think we can start the motions. This may be a bit cumbersome because I believe we do need to vote on them separately. So we'll try and run through them one at a time. So I'll move that we approve a one-year contract extension with a 2% COLA for unit A. Do I have a second? Thank you. And vote to Avery?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Everybody moved. Sean? Valerie?
Aye.
Everybody just switched around on me, and that's aye. So that is a unanimous vote. Next motion to approve a one-year contract extension with a 2% COLA for unit B are curriculum coordinators and student support leaders. And vote to Avery?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Aye, also unanimous. Next motion to approve a one-year contract extension with a 2% COLA for unit C, our nurses. Vote to Avery?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Aye, also unanimous. And the final motion in support of a one-year contract extension with a 2% COLA for our unit G, Reading and Math Interventionists. Votes to Avery?
Aye.
Chris? Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
And aye, also unanimous. So we'll have four contract extensions to sign and return to the WEA.
May I say, those contract documents are in our office for signature.
All right, I will sign them and happily get them back to the union, and we will have four more units settled, one step closer for everyone. Our next topic on the agenda is a WEA memorandum of agreement for the full return. And while I think it sounds like those discussions have gone very well, that that document's not quite, you know, all i's dotted, t's crossed just yet, Bill?
Yes, there were a couple of minor changes, nothing of a material nature. And they're holding the vote, is it tomorrow, Carrie? Yeah, tomorrow until midnight. And so then we'll bring it back and I will talk with Christine about whether she feels comfortable waiting or if she would like us to call a special meeting to approve that impact bargaining document. But once again, it was a very good, a very positive impact bargaining session and focused not only on the needs of teachers, but very much on the needs of students also.
Yeah, I did also receive some very positive feedback from Christine Gisome. Was really very grateful for all of the, you know, safety measures that have been taken. Teachers feel comfortable coming back into the classroom and or having their classrooms be fuller if they've been there all along. And also have really, really appreciated all the efforts of parents volunteering to help out and secure vaccine appointments for staff members. She reiterated that again. So please convey, Bill, that absolutely whatever the union is comfortable with, if they would like for us to call a special meeting later this week, we are happy to do so. If we can approve it next Monday night, that's fine, too. It's really completely at your discretion and theirs.
Okay, I will let you know, something I failed to mention earlier tonight is our maintenance staff is replacing the MERV 13 filters with new MERV 13 filters, just changing the filters out. That will be done at all the elementary schools before Monday.
Great, great, fantastic. Thank you for that update as well. Is there any other business before we move on to warrants? I think this is a record. I don't think we've ever been this far ahead of schedule. But Alicia, warrant vote to you.
Motion to approve payroll warrant 2140 SP dated April 1st, 2021 in the amount of $2,021,299.88.
And vote is to Avery?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Aye, next one?
Motion to approve expense warrant 2140 SE dated April 4th. Sorry, let's try that again, April 1st, 2021, in the amount of $367,090.10.
And votes to Avery?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen? Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. And we've got a whole bunch of minutes. Thank you to Valerie and Nina for keeping us up to date. Thank you.
All right, so we'll break these up by subject. So motion to approve school committee regular session minutes dated March 15th, 2021.
Second.
And vote to Avery?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Motion to approve school committee meeting minutes superintendent interviews dated March 11th, 2021, March 13th, sorry, March 12th, 2021, March 16th, 2021, and March 17th, 2021.
Second.
And all in favor, Avery?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Aye, also unanimous.
Motion to approve school committee executive session minutes not for public release dated February 1st, 2021, March 1st, 2021, and March 10th, 2021.
Second.
And all in favor, Avery?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
And aye. And then next is personnel update.
Well, we've got about 20, 22 entries on the personnel update, continuing with FMLAs, some resignations. I want to make note of two retirements, however. One is Christine Eddy, who was a 23-year teacher who has been at the Christopher Lee School, outstanding teacher, outstanding. I'll miss her because I, about the last five years, have taught a weather lesson in her class and have always looked forward to that every year. And it's, she has been just terrific. And also, our 612 guidance director, Wendy Pekaczyk. Wendy will be retiring in December after 21 years of excellent service also to our school system. So to both of them, we wish them a very happy, healthy retirement.
Absolutely. Thank you for those recognitions. And I believe our last motion is to adjourn to executive session.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to unit A collective bargaining and non-union personnel contract negotiations. As an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position, the committee will not return to public session.
And I will second, and roll call vote to Avery?
Aye.
Chris? Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Aye, I think that may be a record number of ayes said during the meeting. So thanks, everyone, for your cooperation. Thanks to everyone for joining us this evening. And as the motion stated, we will not be returning to public session, but we will see you next Monday night for Bill's presentation on School Finance 101. Thank you very much, everyone. Good night.
Committee, check your inbox for the link.